All righty, I have 7:00 PM. So I am going to start with a roll call to make sure if you could just respond with[23.41][23.41]"here" or "yes," some affirmative for your attendance. Carrie Callahan?
Here.
Johnny Carrier?
Here.
Thank you. Ron Llewellyn?
Here.
Sarah Nadeem?
Yeah.
Rob Phillips?
Rob Phillips here.
Thank you. John Schoenhorn?
Here.
John Brockman? John Brockman, can you confirm your attendance? I can see him. All right, we're going to move on. Harry Marsh?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Steve Walsh?
Here.
Okay. Sandy, I can see John, but I don't know if maybe he stepped away momentarily. Okay. All right, we will open the organizational meeting and the first order of business is election of officers.
Should we do the notice first?
So we will do the chair, excuse me?
Do you want to do the notice first or after we do the regular meeting?
No, we'll do the notice when we open the regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I need a nomination for chair, please.
I'll nominate Carrie Callahan, Johnny Carrier.
Wait.
Sarah?
Let me, this is John Schoenhorn. The, what Miss, what Carrie and I discussed was that Carrie Callahan would be chair for 2020 and that I would be chair. We would switch roles like we did last time in 2021. So I'd like to amend your, Johnny Carrier, I'd like to amend your motion to, if it's a friendly amendment, to allow that, please.
Yeah, you're right. I'll make the motion to elect Carrie Callahan for the remainder of 2020 and then John Schoenhorn for 2021 as chair.
This is Sarah Nadeem, a second. Sarah, thank you. Are there any other motions to be considered? Okay, last call, any other motions? Okay.
Any other nominations?
Or nominations, sorry. Motion for chair, but nomination for chair, okay. So I'm going to do a roll call for this as well. The regular members will be voting on this and the alternates will not. Carrie Callahan?
Aye.
Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Sarah Nadeem?
Aye.
Rob Phillips?
Aye.
And John Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Thank you. And that passes. So we will move on to, this was for chair, so we'll move on for secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I will nominate John Schoenhorn to be secretary for 2020 and Carrie Callahan for 2021, Johnny Carrier.
Second.
And the second, sorry, who, was that, Ron?
Yeah, second, Ron Llewellyn.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote again, please. Carrie Callahan?
Aye.
Johnny Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Sarah Nadeem?
Aye.
Rob Phillips?
Aye.
And John Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Thank you. And that passes. So we will move on to, this was for chair, so we'll move on for secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I will nominate John Schoenhorn to be secretary for 2020 and Carrie Callahan for 2021, Johnny Carrier.
Second.
And the second, sorry, who, was that, Ron?
Yeah, second, Ron Llewellyn.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote again, please. Carrie Callahan?
Aye.
Johnny Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Sarah Nadeem?
Aye.
Rob Phillips?
Aye.
And John Schoenhorn?
Aye.
All righty, thank you very much. The only other item with respect to our administrative meeting is any questions, concerns, comments with respect to the bylaws. And I will state that now is not the only time we have to address it. There are a handful of times.
I believe it's quarter.
That these, it's at your annual meeting and then for the remainder of the year, we would have July and October remaining in 2020 if there are items to be addressed in the bylaws.
I have a question. I had mentioned it to a couple of other people on the board. Is it within, I know that we're meeting under these circumstances because of the governor's emergency orders. Would it be within the purview of the Freedom of Information Act to have remote meetings or have people at least phone or video in to a regular meeting in the future as opposed to requiring that the meetings be held either at Town Hall or in a circumstance where the emergency continues or comes back in the fall? Health emergency?
Okay, that's, I think there's two questions there. It sounds like, could we do this in perpetuity regardless of the health emergency and would we continue to do it if the health emergency?
Not exactly. My question is whether people could, if we were, if we were having regular meetings, whether they could, as a matter of course, and not violate the Freedom of Information Act, be able to attend by, if we amended our bylaws, by virtual participation such as a lot of corporate directors offices, officers do now? Or would that violate the state Freedom of Information Act?
I don't know. I also don't know what the town policy is going to be moving ahead. So once we are open to the public, if it's the expectation, quite honestly, nothing prohibits anyone from submitting written documentation and a written letter regarding an application. There isn't a requirement that they attend the meeting anyway and their letter can be read into the record or shared with the commission and the applicant and noted. So they don't necessarily have to be here in order to participate in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a fluid thing and we probably have to see where this, you know, six months from now, where do we stand and then a year from now, where do we stand?
I would agree with that. That's, you know, all this came on much faster than we can imagine even though it feels like it's been months. I think that there's a lot of discussion going forward, but I don't think we're in any position to make any kind of decisions on that at this point.
Right, right. So, okay, it's, I'm taking the quietness with everyone else that there isn't necessarily a comment or anything that needs to be changed with the bylaws at the moment. Again, there's certainly opportunity later in the year and if there is something that someone sees, you know, reach out to me ahead of time. We're happy to get that coordinated in advance of the July or the October meeting. All right, so with that, we can close the administrative meeting.
Do we need a motion?
Yep, I'll take a mo-
We need a motion to close.
So moved, Johnny.
Yep, and a second?
Second, Sarah Nadeem.
Okay.
Okay, and this one, we can, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, we are now ready to get down to business.
Start the regular meeting.
Yes, so we will open the regular meeting and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Callahan.
All right, welcome everyone to the May 18th, 2020 meeting of the Farmington Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, the first ZBA meeting to occur in the coronavirus era. Would the secretary please read the legal notice into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town of Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Janelle Lepper, application for variance to construct accessory structure in other-than-required yard at 2 Woodside Drive in R30C Zone. Salam Zako, application for variance to reduce side yard setback from 40 feet to 29 feet for additional roof overhang at 55 Eli Road, R80 Zone. At these hearings, interested persons may be heard and written communications received. A copy of these proposals is online at https://www.farmington CT dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals or please call the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325 dated at Farmington, Connecticut, April 30th, 2020. Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, Carrie Callahan, Chairman.
Thank you. The first item, just as a point of procedure, just so that we may proceed in as efficient and orderly a way as possible, I believe what we're going to do is hear from the first applicant, we'll hear any, we'll hear the first application, discuss that and decide it and conclude the first agenda item before proceeding to the second. So as for the first agenda item, the variance application of Janelle Lepper, we may be here first from the applicant.
Okay, Janelle, it's all yours. And if you want, would you like me to move to the plan here?
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Shannon, this is John Craig and I'm here with my daughter, Janelle.
Thank you.
Helping her out.
Great. Could you explain your request to the commission, please?
I will. We were doing some stump removal and a little landscaping and earlier phone call to Shannon gave me the assumption that we were within the bounds where we put the stones for the shed. However, it was not interpreted right by myself and hence we're here for the application for variance. The location for, that is suitable, really isn't suitable for the shed because it's on the far side of the house, down a good-sized slope and it wouldn't make any practical sense to put a shed down there as access to it would be very limited. And we plan on using it for storage, things that don't fit in the garage. Ray's Ranch has a small garage. So we're trying to get it as aesthetically pleasing as possible. It's past the house, past the end of the driveway. It is closer to Coppermine Road than is allowed, but we would like your indulgence. I don't know if you have pictures there.
I do, so I, I can scroll through. That's the elevation and front elevation of the shed. That's the aerial, this is the property in question to Woodside Drive at the intersection of Woodside and Coppermine. This is the same, just the topography. Mr. Craig, and I believe you made reference to the fact that this slopes away, is that correct? I'm seeing on the topo, it slopes away.
Sloping down, down to the northwest corner.
Correct, okay. And that's the list, and then I have photos here.
Nice.
So this is Coppermine out here with sidewalk, their fence. And additional photos of the yard and the enclosure. And am I correct, and I think it showed in the original, I don't want to bounce around too much on everybody, but this is, this is also Ms. Lepper's property, but a good, approximately 50% of the backyard has remained in a wooded condition, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so-
What was the lot size overall?
Um-
I'd have to-
It's an R30, it's R30 zone, I think it's right on, on the 30,000. And then come up to here.
Rob Phillips?
Sorry, this area that's shaded is the area that by our regulations would permit the shed by right. The fence is, the fence was located, is sketched in and you can see, so this is the area to this, well, it's not south, but to the-
West.
West. The west, the west that is wooded outside of this fenced area. And so this is, when you look, when we were looking at the photos, this is the area that is lawn, that you can see where the cursor is. So, and the request, the shed basically is being placed at the end of the driveway, is that correct?
Yes, about 15 feet from the end of the driveway.
Okay, okay. Do you have anything else that you want to share with the commission before we go to comments and questions?
I don't think so. It's a pretty simple request and if they look favorably behind us, that would be great.
Okay. Well, there might be a few.
Shannon, nice job, Shannon.
A few questions, so we'll let them. Do you want me to run through or?
Yes, go ahead and run through it if you would.
That's fine. So I'm going to, I'm going to start with the members and then the alternates and I'm going to finish with the chair. Carrie is how I've been doing it traditionally. Okay. So Johnny Carrier, you're up if you have any questions.
I have a question and a comment. First question is, what is the shed going to be built of, materials, look, that kind of thing?
I was going to use Textural 11, painted a natural wooded color to kind of blend with the background and shingles a wood blend for the roof.
Okay, and I see there's a couple of windows on the north elevation, which is the side towards Coppermine?
No, that's the, goes towards the subdivision to the north.
Okay. The comment I have is 17 years ago, I came in for this exact application for my own house and I was denied. And that's one of the primary reasons why I sit on ZBA today was because I felt like there are situations that don't fit the mold. And if it's, you know, any indication on my end, I would be in favor of this only because it's, you know, there are grades going down the back, I did drive by today. It is very convenient to have a shed, you know, off the driveway with accessibility in the garage, et cetera. And there's not a day that I don't climb up my 12-foot hill to my shed and think how nice would it be if it was at the end of my driveway? So I'll leave that comment there.
Duly noted, thank you. Ron Llewellyn, comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Sarah Nadeem, comments or questions?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Thank you. Rob Phillips, comments or questions?
Yeah, the stone path in the picture, is that the location where the shed would be going?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Okay. John Schoenhorn, comments or questions?
Could you just explain, other than I see that the gravel is already there and you missed, and you had originally thought that this was within the scope, could you just explain why this exact shed could not have been moved further, I'm trying to think what direction?
North, it would have to be further north.
Yeah, behind the house. I mean, I, we always have these issues with corner lots that there's extra requirements, but why it could not have been moved further towards the subdivision even somewhat? That's, that's my question.
We had been toying with the idea of putting on an addition in the back of the house, which would have really been right in the same position as the shed or very close to it. That would not have worked well at all.
All right, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. John Brockman, do you have any questions or comments?
I'll just make the one comment and kind of, kind of echo what Johnny said in the corner lots. We do end up seeing things, I can remember when I started years ago, a pool would have been in somebody's driveway if they had put it where it should be. I drove by, I can see where it really falls off and goes down, so I just, I think that's the, that's the spot for it. So that's just a comment, no questions, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Harry Marsh, questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one question. All the trees on the west side, I guess it is, on the left, are they going to remain?
Yes.
I believe that's the intent. John or Janelle, could you comment?
Yes, all the rest of the trees in the west side of the lot will remain as wooded area.
On the west, okay.
Anything else, Carrier, you're all set?
We're almost set, thank you.
Thank you. Steve Walsh, questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Callahan?
Yes, just to clarify, the hardship claim is, as I understand it, that the stone path that's already been placed essentially by mistake cannot be moved into what is the gray shaded area because of the topography of the property? Right, that in effect, the back half of the shed would in effect be falling down the hill?
More or less, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the substantial hardship claim is based not on whatever hardship would exist if you had to move the stone, however many feet that would be to the north, but rather on the topography of the property, is that correct?
That's correct. If we were to have to move the shed down, we would probably abandon the project because it wouldn't make sense to put the shed down below.
Understood. And have, and I, this is part for you, Shannon, have all the neighbors been notified and who have received any opposition?
The appropriate notification was made and the sign, as evident in the photos, was posted, so yes, all the notifications were complete. We have not received correspondence. We do have one person that has called in, so I will, I'm fairly confident it's regarding the other application, but nonetheless, we will check in to make sure there's no questions or comments.
Oh, I was going to ask, once we've all had our chance to question and comment-
Right.
And if that is concluded, my next planned step would be to see if there is opposition.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Procedurally, I'm on solid footing then, I guess. So having concluded the questions and comments by the regular members of the ZBA and the alternates, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
So I'm going to, Corrillo's, I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly. And I know you've, you've got yourself, let's see if I can unmute. Yeah, I've unmuted, you've got to unmute yourself.
No, we're here on, for the other-
For 55. That's fine, I figured as much, but I wanted to procedurally make sure we checked in, so.
Hearing there is no opposition, with regard to the application for variance to construct an accessory structure in other-than-required yard at 2 Woodside Drive, may we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. Shannon, if you could just put the wordage back up so I could read it into the record.
Uh, yeah. So basically, we're, the motion would be, that's, I don't have, because I don't have the agenda up here.
Okay, hold on.
So it's to, it's to locate the shed in other-than-required yard.
In an R30C zone.
Okay. If, yeah, I will make the motion to approve it, to construct an accessory structure in other-than-required yard at 2 Woodside Drive, R30C Zone.
Thank you, is your second?
Second, Rob Phillips.
Okay, discussion or comments from anyone?
And if somebody's going to comment, please identify yourself so we have a record that is as clear as possible.
Okay, hearing, no other comments, I'm going to do a roll call vote. John Carrier?
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn?
Aye.
Sarah Nadeem?
Aye.
Rob Phillips?
Aye.
John Schoenhorn?
Aye.
And Carrie Callahan?
Aye.
Okay, all, motion, yes, application passes.
Thank you very much.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
John and Janelle for getting on. If you, there's any questions, you can follow up with me tomorrow in the office.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank the board very much.
Thank you all very much for your time.
You're welcome.
The second item on the agenda for the regular meeting is the application of Salam Zako for a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 40 feet to 29 feet for addition roof overhang at 55 Eli Road. Is it Eli or Eli?
Eli.
Yeah. Eli.
Eli Road, R80 Zone. May we hear from the applicant first, please?
Good evening, my name is William Galski, I'm an attorney with an office in Plainville and I am here with Dr. Salam Zako. We're on together and I would like to go over the, some background and we have a couple other, another gentleman who will speak as well. Doctor, the primary purpose for the application is Dr. Zako suffers from polio. He is 67 years old and he desires to construct an indoor, an addition for an indoor pool as recommended by his physician for twice daily exercise regimen. Dr. Zako has resided in Farmington for nearly 33 years and he's been at the current property for five years, purchased it with his wife at 55 Eli Road. If you look on the exhibit, the plot plan, which is on the screen right now, it shows approximately one, about one-third of the property that is owned. We're at the top of the ridge line on Eli Road and approximately two-thirds of the property goes down below the ridge line and down towards- the ridge line, and down towards Mountain Road. The lot has remained in the same size and configuration since the 1976 subdivision, and in its legal description and the deed, it is described as, makes reference to the survey map of 1976. I'd like to introduce the architect, Joseph Buchek, who will go into a little bit more detail about the addition, this is the second proposal, there was an initial proposal that was a little more aggressive, as far as going over the side building line, and based upon feedback that was received from a neighbor, the plan was scaled back such that the building is substantially with, off of the building line, away from the building line, there's about a one-foot difference, and the difference is in the, for the, the main reason for the variance is for, to accommodate the roof of the architecture. So Joe, are you prepared to go forward?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Joe Buchek, I'm Salam's architect for this project. When you drive up the driveway to this home, you're presented with this broad sweeping roof, which is one of its signature features, and we felt it was very important, critical, to maintain that roof plane across the front of the house. One, one of the other features of that is this five-foot overhang that is part of the roof structure, so we felt it was important to maintain that as much as possible as well, and that's why in this design, we've tried to hold the actual building back along the setback, and it's really only the overhang that extends into the setback area. I think it's also important to note that it's, it's only the apex of the triangle that extends the 10 feet 4 inches into the setback area. And then the pool itself is almost fully in the property area.
I think we lost audio, I can't hear anything.
I've finished speaking.
Okay, Bill, do you have anything else that you're going to add?
Yes, a couple other points is that the current layout of the site doesn't really allow for a practical alternative location for the addition. Dr. Zako needs and uses a cane or walker to move around, so it's not really an option for him to have a separate building located in a different site. The west side of the property gets us into the ridge line protection area, this applicant, this proposed application will require an application to planning and zoning as well. To the north of the property are the mechanicals for the property, namely the well, there are propane tanks and generator on the, on the north side of the house, okay, where Shannon is indicating right now is the approximate location of the mechanicals, if you will. Interestingly enough, if you read the regulations, if the project were fixed, flipped, I'm sorry, then it would actually allow those mechanicals to get within 10 feet of the side property line, article, section three of, Article three of your regulations allow fuel tanks to be within 10 feet of a property line, if unscreened, and five feet if screened, so that there arguably would be more of the effect on the side property line if the property were reversed. It's also important to note that the proposed addition is only one-story, so it's going to have a relatively low view to it. Probably the most important thing is that the proposed location keeps the addition further from the ridge line than if it was flip-flopped, and this less intrusiveness will benefit many of the neighbors to the west of the site that look up at the property. There are some trees along the ridge line as well, some significant trees as far as the diameter, and those would make it impractical to put a building in that area as well. The southerly property line, there you go, does have some significant trees on Dr. Zako's property that can remain, and they do offer a buffer and some privacy to the proposed addition. So there is still a wooded barrier that would not need to be destroyed or affected with the proposed addition. So in summary, we believe that the request is a reasonable accommodation that will in fact add to the property's value. There are a couple other photos, I think they have, of the actual photos of the side of the property, there we go. So this is looking west, and you can see the person over on the left there, the photo has indicated the approximate limit of the home expansion, and that would be in the current lawn area, and then to the left, or to the south of that, are several significant trees, mostly oaks, I believe, that would be undisturbed with the proposal. I think there's one more if you can, Shannon, that comes the other way, okay, there we go, thank you.
This one?
Yeah, that one, or even the one before, they're both, there you go, that's probably a little bit better, shows the current grass area, and the proposed addition will come off of that front corner, if you look at the footprint of the building. So there will still be room, grass area to the right where the little small fiddleheads are in there, right, so it would not have impinged that far. And if you come back just a tiny bit more, that's probably, right there is probably, and maybe back to the right, just a hair, right about there is probably where the limit of the roof would reach at its maximum. And the side of the house, it's important to note that the side of the house is not parallel with the property line, we're looking east right now, so as you go further to the east, the house and the property line actually get a little bit further apart. And you can see that there are several significant trees on the right-hand side there as well, there you go.
Okay, you can see that they diverge.
Right.
As you head east.
But you can also see that the, that the face of the house, the westerly elevation of the house is more or less parallel with the ridge line, and a, an addition on the right side of the house would actually get closer to the ridge line than the proposal would, considering the size of it on the, on the south side of the house, and you can pick that up in the footprint as well, if you were to look at the footprint. The zoning location survey.
Right.
I think it's up at the top.
It is, so.
There you go.
There we go. Okay.
Dr. Zako's here with me, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Okay. All right, Carrie, if you're agreeable, I'll go through the board members again and get comments, all right. All right, everyone, we're going to roll through like we did for the last application, now hypothetically, by last names, so Mr. Carrier, you are up if you have any questions or comments.
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ron Llewellyn?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Sarah Nadine?
Could you explain again, you were saying that you believe that even if this was approved, you would need to go through the ridge line protection?
Yes, because it's within the ridge line setback. Is that correct, Shannon, is my understanding within 150 feet of the ridge line?
Okay, so my question, okay, that was my understanding, and how large is this proportionally to the size of the house now, is it adding 25%, 30% to the existing structure, for example?
Joe, can you answer that? I don't have an exact number, but I'm looking at it, it appears to be about 25% from 25 to 30%. I would agree with that.
Okay, those are my questions for now, thank you. Thank you. Rob Phillips?
No questions.
Thank you. John Schoenhorn?
I want to follow up on something that Commissioner Nadine mentioned, and that is with regard to the ridge line protection special zone, it's my understanding, I looked, it was mentioned in some of the materials we received, and I looked at the regulation, and it specifically prohibits any expansion that's greater than 25% of the floor area of the existing structure, so is it, if we don't know the square footage, isn't it at least conceivable from our perspective that we don't even have the authority to approve anything greater than that if it's just going to be overruled by the Planning and Zoning Commission?
No, there's a special permit provision. So there's a, there's a gradation to this, and there's a special permit provision to allow for the expansion.
Beyond the 25% that even can only be, I'm looking at section, what is this, E, section 26, but I think it's 10E1 little A, in other words, I don't want to run into the situation where we're going to agree to something only to have it not be allowed, I'm looking at uses allowed only by site plan, and then there's uses allowed only by special permit, are you looking at the F, is that what we're talking about, that talks about a development except for alterations, that section? When we're talking about the percentage of the lot that can be developed, I thought that this applies to.
Right, so uses allowed by special permit, no more than 40% of a portion of a lot within a ridge line setback is defined by this section.
But that's development, that's not an extension, I thought.
Correct, this is development, this is development, they're allowed up to 40% by special permit.
All right, okay, could you explain, you know, there were a couple of things, I'll move, I just didn't quite understand that, but you said something about a reasonable accommodation, isn't the issue that you're suggesting or indicating in your, in your application, isn't it a personal hardship that, rather than a property hardship that you're discussing here?
I believe that the, is part of the application, part of the exhibits there, you do have a pamphlet concerning the ADA, and I did do a little bit of research on that, and clearly it does not remove your jurisdiction of your authority, but it certainly does seem to make the nature of an application to accommodate a handicap a personal one.
Well, I guess, I would think that would involve access such as a ramp for wheelchair and things like that, which would clearly override any sightline setbacks and whatnot, because this, this goes with the land, it doesn't go with the individual, could you just describe, I'm not able on this version of what's being shown, or the copies that I was able to print, I didn't have a chance to see the actual blueprints, could you describe the, the actual swimming pool room, in other words, how big is the tile around it, how big is the pool itself, I see a rounded, it's like a whirlpool or a jacuzzi area, I just don't, I can't see the, oh, now I can see.
The, the pool itself is in the nature of a LAP pool, that's L-A-P, in that the pool is seven feet wide.
And 26 feet long.
That's correct, yes, yes.
All right, and how big is the spa area, I can't really tell, that's, I assume like a jacuzzi kind of area, right?
It's a, you know, it's a, it's a half, a semicircle, half circle, and from the scale on there, it appears to be about three and a half feet.
And the tiled area around the pool, how big is that?
I would say again, from scaling it, it looks like it's approximately four feet.
And the area that's marked as changing room, is that currently part of the house, or would that also be part of the addition?
That's part of it. That's part of the house now, just to the right of the changing room, you can see a square.
Yes, I see that.
Yeah, I believe that that is the outside, the current outside pillar of the house.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And could you just, you had said something about looking up from the, from the streets below, this is directly across from the polo grounds, is it not?
It is.
So the view down is to the polo grounds, could you explain what you meant by how it would benefit the people who are looking up from the valley?
Well, I think if you're, because of the fact, and again, I would refer you to the plot plan, that the addition to the house being on the south side, less possible to be seen than it is, than it would be if it was on the north side. And it may very well be that someone directly below from the polo grounds, for example, may not be able to see up and over the ridge line anyway, I did drive by there this morning, and I, and I could see up there where it was, you know, you can see where the clearing is, it's, it's a relatively low elevation house, there's only a portion of the house that is, that is two stories right now, and Dr. Zako is going to be moving down to the first floor from, from the second floor, so it does not have an intrusive elevation, if you will, from, you know, compared to some of the other houses up there, but this will, by, by putting the addition on the southerly side, it will minimize any, any possible, you know, view from down below.
Well, when you say down below, are you talking from Route 10, or are you talking about from Town Farm Road, or from Devonwood, which is kind of across from the?
Yeah, Town Farm Road.
All right, Shannon, could you enlarge the image that's there now, the satellite view?
No, this is a PDF, I'd have to log in.
Oh, can you just do the, oh, actually, couldn't you just use the plus symbol on that, it's all right, you don't.
No, because it's a PDF, the limit is what it is, I can't, I can't expand it because that's the edge of the page, it's a PDF picture of the, of the image, so.
But if you go up to the image, it's at 30, plus symbol next to the hand, yeah.
I can do that, but you're not going to be able to see over to Town Farm Road.
No, 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 I meant from this, I just wanted to look at this actual image. I meant from this, I just wanted to look at this actual image for a minute.
Okay, my apologies.
Yes. I'm noticing that to the, the area to the north, where she just put her, the cursor there, did you explore whether it was feasible to put the addition with the pool on that side next to the garage?
It's extremely impractical to go to that side for a couple of reasons. Number one is it would be further for Dr. Zacco to have to maneuver. He'd have to go through the garage to get to the pool, whereas now it will be off of the bedroom. Just about where the cursor is now is the well on the property. So, it would require digging a new well somewhere else on the property. The septic system, excuse me, is it to the front of the house, to the east? Also, over where the cursor is, where it was just a second ago, there are the propane tanks, and the propane tanks are, have the gas lines underground to the house. In that location there, it's a significant away, a significant distance away from the property line as well. So, switching would require relocation of them as well.
And I also wanted to ask if, Shannon, could you move the cursor down to the light tan area that's close to the ledge there? This area from below appears to be clear cut. Is that something that your client did? Or was that something that preexisted his purchase of this property?
Doctor, can you answer that?
Yeah, this is Salam Zacco. Thank you for looking into this. No, this was how it was. We had, there are big trees there already, and they're still there. One tree was somewhat dead and was going to fall, and we had to take it down. But there is no clearing there, there's the grass.
Yeah, that's currently lawn, and you can see from the shadows the black marks that extend to the upper right-hand direction there. Yeah, those are relatively significant trees, probably 18 inches in diameter. 12 to 18 inches.
I think that's all the questions that I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. John Brockman? Any questions or comments?
Yep, one question, just to clarify for me. Looking at the current picture, where the cursor is now, right at that number 8202, that is an empty lot?
Yes, it is.
It is currently vacant, privately owned.
Okay. So, that, okay, so that could be, could be developed, the lot there, but nothing's on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, it is privately owned. It's not an open space or land trust or anything like that. It is privately owned and considered a building lot.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Harry Marsh?
Just one quick question for the doctor. What are you doing now in lieu of your own swimming pool attached to the house in regard to swimming?
Well, I used to go to the Bristol Hospital, because I work there at Bristol Hospital, the aquatic exercise area. But it's become very difficult for me as the years are passing by and getting weaker and weaker. And now, I also want to note that this is not a real, a true swimming pool. It's like an aquatic exercise with a little spa that is part of it. It's only about three and a half feet deep and only seven feet wide. It's basically for me, the exercise I need is to walk back and forth in the water to strengthen my clavicles muscles, which are...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Harry, you're all set?
Well said.
Okay. Steve Walsh, any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Carrie Callahan?
The, I believe I heard the reason referenced earlier, but as I look at the... Hmm, not that picture.
Which one do you want to see?
The one showing the building and the roof overhang in relation to the side yard setback line.
Yep. All right, here, hang on, let me zoom out a little bit. Is that what you're looking for?
Right there. Just so I'm clear, it looks like the structure itself barely even touches the setback line, or it just catches it in a couple of points. And the reason, or the substantial reason for the request for the variance is the roof overhang.
That's correct.
My question is, is the reason that the roof is designed to overhang the structure by such a significant margin an aesthetic reason?
Yes. It is, to me.
Maybe this is a question for the architect. Can you explain to me how that aesthetic reason is sufficient to establish substantial hardship?
I guess if you looked at the front elevation of the house in order to maintain the balance of the overhangs on both sides, that we felt it was important to maintain that five-foot dimension.
Okay, so basically, it would make the south side of the house with the addition consistent with the north side of the house?
Correct, yes. Well...
Joe, does it impact the constructability of the roof?
It would be more, it would chop the roof up if we were to follow the path of the building, essentially. If we were to sawtooth the roof planes as the edge of the building does, that that would become quite difficult to build, actually.
Are there any other comments from any board member?
If I may, Shannon, may I just add that the regulations would allow for an outdoor patio as well, but not seeking, or an outdoor deck that could get even closer than that without a variance. Again, that's Section 3 of Article 3, but there aren't any proposed exits on that elevation of the building.
Could I ask a question at this point, Shannon?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd like to try to get the board member questions addressed, absolutely.
Has there, if the portion of the pool area that has what looks like some kind of a device, is that, is that a, what is that to the, directly to the top, yeah, that area? What is that, and to the left of that, which says, it's like "on"? What is that there?
That's an exercise bike, and the text is "DM" for "down", so that's the stairs that would go down to a basement area under the addition.
So, you would be putting in a new basement as well as the floor, right? In other words, the pool, it would be a place to go under, or at least eat?
It would be mainly for the mechanical equipment for the pool.
All right. And as I understand it, the, you're putting in a new master bedroom there as well, as I see, and two closets? Is that, that would be in the, what I would call the side of the house facing Eli Road?
Yes.
And then the pool would go to the, I would say, the rear of the house facing west, over the, looking out over Avon Mountain into the valley, correct?
Correct.
And is there, was any thought given to either making the closet smaller or the area around the pool smaller so that there wasn't any, at least any overage over either the setback for the building itself or the roof?
Well, the, I believe the building itself does not extend over the setback at all. We've tried to follow that setback line.
Oh, I see that, yes. I'm sorry, I was following, I thought Commissioner Callahan thought, made some comment, but you're right, it looks like it just touches the setback line.
That's the intent, yes. Yeah. And the area around, around the pool is probably as narrow as it can be right now to safely navigate around the pool.
The closets are designed also to be handicap accessible. You can go ahead and speak, Shannon.
Yeah, if I may make a comment, is that this bedroom and the closets are, and the tiled area around the pool are designed to be handicap accessible, so I can go in with a wheelchair.
Dr. Zacco, it's rather difficult to hear you. If you could speak up, please?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Much better, thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, I was, I was saying that the bedroom and the closets and the tiled area around the pool are designed to be handicap accessible, so I can go around with a wheelchair, and I sometimes use a walker as well. So, we tried, it's difficult to make them smaller.
Yeah, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Last call from the board members. Any other questions? Okay. Just two other, a couple of bookkeeping things. I did want to note that all the notifications were done, sign is posted, and we did receive a letter of opposition from the neighbor that was sent out to you. The Corillo's issued a letter that was sent. I've got a copy of it here, but I also know Mrs. Corillo is on the phone as well. So, with that, I'm going to go to public comment.
Public comment, yes. We have heard from the applicant. We have heard questions from regular and alternate members of the zoning board of appeals. May, to the extent that there is opposition to the application, may we hear from the opposition, please?
Yes, hi, I'm Attorney Mike Boizik. I'm here with Nancy Corillo, owner of the parcel to the south, which is 8202, I believe, on the map. And essentially, we're concerned that, you know, the fact that this roofed overhang is going to cut into, you know, 10 feet of the setback, it's going to affect the value of the lot, which is a building lot that my client owns. Forty-foot setback buffer in these lots on Eli Road or a selling point. Having this where, you know, it's intruding in by this much is likely to have a negative impact on her property. And also, in the sense that, you know, while this building addition, the proposed addition is right up on the property line, and we're being told that there are no other alternatives, although the property does seem to have enough room to accommodate this. Might not be the best or easiest situation, but the property can accommodate this addition without, you know, infringing on any setback lines. Even this addition, even if it was on this side, if it was scaled back a bit and the roof line scaled back, I believe by right, you have a one and a half foot right into the setback on, for overhangs anyhow. So, it would seem that it should be able to be done without having to, you know, intrude that much into the setback.
May I respond?
Yep.
Yeah, this is the, sorry, can you just identify yourself?
Identify your speaking, please.
Is, Mr. Boizik, are you done, or?
I believe so, unless there's any questions for me. But I think, you know, on the other side of the property, there's ample, ample room to build such an addition without infringing on anything. I know Attorney Gasky mentioned that there's propane and other lines that come into play, but it wouldn't be a cost prohibitive matter. My client owns other property on Eli Road, and they've added pools, additions, built on the ledge, so the ledge is not something that's an insurmountable expense, nor are the running of the necessary utility lines.
I think that there were great pains taken in designing this. This is the R80 zone, which has the widest side setback at 40 feet. There are substantial trees out there, natural vegetation, that will provide a buffer. It's interesting to note, I believe it's one of the exhibits, but we found that, that the same neighbor had obtained a similar approval back in 2000 for an extension of a non-conforming roof extension from this board, so...
If, just if I can interject, as to that variance that was granted, that was for a, putting a roof on a garage. The garage was already in an existing structure that probably a pre-existing zone, it was probably there since the 1940s. And prior to, you know, even applying for a variance, our client went to all the neighbors and asked if there were any issues with it. Hearing none, he moved forward. Had there been any opposition, he wouldn't have gone for it. But it was simply putting on a roof, from a flat roof to a steep roof with some pitch on it, and that was all. The structure was already there, and it was in the front, basically in the driveway.
So, I think, again, I think they're both probably very minor requests, given the size of the property and the setbacks that are already up there, and, again, the natural features.
I guess the existing house, I know they're saying that in order to, you know, trying to blend this into the existing roof line, but you said the existing roof line only has a five-foot overhang. Now, you're coming into a 10-foot overhang? I guess I'm a little confused by that, and why it can't be designed in a way that wouldn't be, even if you're, if you're not going to locate on the other side, which, you know, could possibly be explored if you're going to put it where you're proposing to put it, why it couldn't be scaled back so that it would be able to fit within the setbacks?
Joe, can you address the design, please?
Well, I guess the 10, the 10 feet is somewhat deceptive because that's kind of a diagonal distance to the apex of the triangle. So, really looking at it from the face of the addition, it is still five feet.
But it goes 10 feet into the setback? That's where I'm a little confused, then. If the property, if the building itself, the addition is right on the line...
Yeah, I guess, I guess the best way to explain that is if that face of the house were parallel to the setback, then the overhang would only be five feet into the setback. But because the house is turned so that it is not parallel to that setback line, then that's where the 10 feet comes into play.
You're somehow accommodating the westerly elevation to maintain the roof, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
But I guess the hardship, what would the hardship be? All I'm hearing here is a hardship being aesthetics and convenience personal to the applicant, as opposed to, you know, a hardship on the property that wouldn't accommodate, you know, any, any type of addition, which is not the case.
I think the introduction of the ADA, from what I have read, indicates that, again, that the personal issues concerning the applicant come into play a little more than if it was not an ADA request, and therefore, I'm not going to say you have a loosening of the, of your regulations or requirements, but I think there, I think clearly there's a massaging of it, and I think the consideration can be taken that it's important or material to have the addition, the pool, to be part of the, number one, be part of the house, and not be separated from the house where traveling, if you will, is a burden to Dr. Zacco.
I understand that, but you could also relocate the garages and put the pool where the garage is, or something.
I guess you could knock the house down and start all over again, too.
Yeah, you could, but I'm not saying that, but you're also building a master bedroom, not just a pool, so, and I'm assuming that Dr. already has a place where he sleeps, so a master bedroom, while convenient and is going to be very accessible to the pool, is not something that would be required, whereas if you just put a pool in there, there could possibly be a design that would not encroach into any setbacks at all.
You know, may I? Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Schoenhorn, although I, may I make a point of order?
Yeah, go ahead, John, I was just about to do the same, I think I know where you're going with this.
Right.
I was about to do it.
Under Article 10, Section 4 of our bylaws, the presentations are to be in succession without allowing an intermixture of comments pro or con, I would ask the chair to rule that this kind of back and forth, although maybe informative is not helpful to the commission, and maybe we should go back to regular order.
No.
I believe at this point we've heard from the opposition.
Correct.
And as I recall, the bylaws that I read on Sunday, the applicant shall then be allowed a brief rebuttal at the discretion of the chair. I believe that, is that correct? That's what the bylaws say.
Yes, yes.
Have heard both the opposition and the rebuttal in the form of the comments made by both parties' respective attorneys. So at this point, I will ask first the opposition, is there anything that you have to say in support of your opposition, other than that which has already been said?
Yes, I have my client here, my client would like to speak.
Yes, hi, Ed Carrillo, Nancy Carrillo's husband. If you look at the other side, the drawing.
I think they have to scroll it.
Can you scroll it?
What drawing would you like to see?
The one on top, the one that shows the, that one. The north side of the house. A little more there, okay. So here, they have a garden, right, and then they are showing also the propane tanks and the well, which are all far away from the house, which give them enough room to do their addition there. At the same time, they have the septic lines coming on that side of the house, which makes all the utilities going into the new addition very easy to connect. Now, the pool that they are building, they're going to have to run a new propane line for the burners for that pool, they're going to have to get, I'll remind, the pool will have an automatic fill, so they're going to have to run a dedicated water line, too, for the pool to fill it up. So I, for me, the cost to build it on one side or the other side of the house, we're talking about the pool and the bedroom, shouldn't be much of a difference. I think it's just mostly a personal, a personal decision, what they want to do.
Anything further from the opposition?
No, we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, oh, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And I would ask.
I do actually just want to say one more thing, this is Nancy Carrillo, you know, we've been homeowners for 40 years up on Eli, always been good neighbors. The reason that we live up on Eli and that everybody lives up on Eli is privacy purposes. I mean, we live up there because we like our privacy, and, you know, we have this lot that we've owned for 40 years, that we've been paying taxes on for 40 years, it is a residential lot, and to put the overhang on there is really going to, we're really, really, it will affect the selling price of the property, and, you know, I just want you all to please take that into effect. That's all I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you. And with the proviso that our bylaws provide for brief rebuttal, is there anything further from the applicant in the form of a rebuttal to that which Mr. and/or Mrs. Carrillo, did Carrillo pronounce correctly?
Carrillo, yes, yes.
That you wish to comment upon and have not, I guess what I'm saying is, as judges often say to we lawyers, don't tell me what's in the papers, don't tell me what you've already said, is there anything in rebuttal that you have to say that has not been presented to the board already?
I would ask you to just focus on the five original photographs of the, that look both east and west, that show the significant vegetation along the property lines between what neighboring property would see, these would be where the roof elevation will be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
With that, the public hearing on the second application that is on this evening's agenda is closed.
Did we get the name of the attorney for the Carrillos? I don't think I got the name.
I did, Mike Boizik. He did, Mike Boizik.
Okay, and are you going to go through the list again, Shannon?
So do we want one more comments and questions? Because we did that already.
We did that already on this, okay, so we heard from the applicant.
We've heard from the board. We heard from the board first, right, well, the applicant.
The applicant, the opposition, okay. Do any board members, based on the discussion that was just held, the opposition and the rebuttal, have any further comments or questions? With the same proviso that this is not an opportunity to rehash what we've already heard. Subject to that, may I have a motion with regard to the application of Salam Zacco for a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 40 to 29 feet?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is John Schoenhorn, I would like to move that the application be rejected because it fails to present a sufficient hardship justifying a substantial encroachment on the side yard setback, 40 feet.
Having heard that motion, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that, Johnny Carrier.
Okay, well, any, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
We have a motion to deny the application and a second for that motion. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
If I may, if I may just, I don't know if anyone wants to speak, but I just wanted to explain why I'm making this motion, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do believe, not only personally, but as a matter of law, that one should grant reasonable accommodation to individuals because of their disability, and to the extent that in general that might apply into variances for applications for a zoning, variance to the zoning laws, I would be certainly in favor of that in most situations. The problem I see is that, and I think this was set out in the letter sent by Nancy Carrillo, and that is that the issue here is one of personal hardship that has almost nothing to do with the property itself, it appears to be an aesthetic question. One of the things that, although it's not part of our review, is I, because this does involve the, the Talpet Mountain, the Ridgeline Protection Area, and one of the things that one must also consider is not just the, if aesthetics is the main issue, then one has to consider what the aesthetics will look like from the valley, as well as from the next-door neighbors, although I think that Mr. Zacco makes a, or Dr. Zacco, rather, makes a good point, that there are a lot of trees on the neighboring property, if this, if that was to become a buildable lot, those trees would mostly be gone, and therefore it's misleading to look at trees on the adjoining property as evidence of property privacy, I just don't think that would play out in the long run. I also don't, I just want to say also for the record, I'm not sure the relevance of showing that in the year 2000, which is not only well before my time on the board, but residents in the town of Farmington, that an application for a variance was made by the current opponents, the next-door neighbor property owner. So I'd say that based on what we have heard, that the applicant failed to set forth sufficient evidence to demonstrate that there was a hardship that went to the property itself, and I think we're required by not only our regulations, but by the statutes to consider it as it applies to the property, the uniqueness, or difficulty in any kind of construction, and that's why I oppose this application, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Johnny Carrier's quick comment, I looked at this a little differently, property owners have the right to cut the trees enough to their property line if they're outside that, you know, Ridgeline Protection Area, so does the neighbor, so I'm not sure that the buffer thing holds up. I'm looking at this a little bit more practically, and that it seems like this addition, although I agree that that's probably the best side of the house to put it on, could be slid away from the protection area and get out of that setback, I know that would alter the front elevation a little bit, but I don't feel that meets the hardship question from that point of aesthetics. Thank you.
Absent further comments, we have a motion and a second.
All right, I am going to do a roll call, so the motion is to deny, so an affirmative is supporting the denial, so just to be clear, because the motion is to deny, so an affirmative will support the denial. John Carrier.
Aye.
Ron Llewellyn.
Abstain.
Sarah Nadine.
Aye.
Rob Phillips.
Rob Phillips abstaining, vote.
You're abstaining?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I heard you, okay. John Schoenhorn.
Aye.
And Carrie Callahan.
Aye.
So we have four affirmative for the denial, two abstentions, and the denial will hold.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the representation of your clients, gentlemen. Do we have a motion?
We've got a except minute for probably December of 2019.
Yes, it's a long time ago, but may I have a motion with regard to the approval of the minutes of the December 16th, 2019 zoning Board of Appeals meeting, please?
So moved, this is John Schoenhorn.
Second, Johnny Carrier.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Any, any abstentions? No, great, thank you. All righty, I think. Motion to adjourn. We're all set. Thank you, everyone, for participating.